So, what's our pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Poland.
Here.
Hofstadter.
Here.
Shoemaker.
Here.
Khan.
Here.
Hafi.
Here.
And Vaughn.
May we have motion to excuse Tom Vaughn and Chief Matt Shaner?
I so move.
Second.
Hafi.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Thank you. We have any visitors that wish to address council this evening? May we have motion to spend three minutes from our pre- our record council meeting in the special work session?
Sure.
I'll second.
Poland.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
And Hafi. Aye.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? Do you have motion to pass?
I so move.
Second, Khan.
Hafi.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
And Shoemaker.
Aye.
Thank you. Bill resolution two thousand twenty-three dash thirteen. Are there any questions on the bills this evening? Do you have motion to pay?
I so move. Shoemaker?
Second.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
And Hafi. Aye.
Thank you. Captain Ly. Thank you.
Alright, the Planning and Zoning Commission will review change of use request. Sparheart Martial Arts has moved into the former Northside Baptist Church. That property is in the special use district, so this is a permitted use of the special use district, but anytime there's a change of use in the special use district, it has to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their approval. There's also nutrition. I can't think of the name of what it is. His wife's company.
Simple Pure Health.
So both of those fit into the special use district. It's just a step that needs to be taken care of. So that'll happen at the May third meeting. The design review guidelines and ordinance drafts have been sent out to the committee members. If anybody wants those at this point, I'd be glad to distribute them now as well. If you want to start reviewing them, I can go ahead and send those out to everyone for their review. Brad, do you have any thoughts on timeline? I don't know. Have you talked to Ruth or anything about?
I haven't. I mean, I just skimmed through the changes, but yeah, I was wondering when our next meeting was going to take place, but.
I'm not. I think she's back around now. I don't think she's in Florida right now. I can reach out and see when we want to keep rolling on that. We had the pre-construction meeting on April nineteenth for the sidewalk project. The contractor, Barbicas, they were hoping to be in within the next three weeks, three to four weeks, and get our project started, the sidewalk on South Washington. Our storm sewer project, we had the bid opening on Friday. There was four plan holders, three submitted bids. There's a bid tab sheet I laid out for you. The parent low bidder is Rising Sun with a bid of three twelve, two twelve. The engineer's estimate is three twenty-one, nine seventy-four, ninety-nine, so I was very happy with the the numbers that came in. Really, all three bids are in line, and it was pretty reassuring to see the low two bids virtually, what, percent and a half? On a three hundred some thousand dollar project, that's good. That's a good sign that things are competitive and good pricing.
Where is Rising Sun out of?
They're out of Mansfield.
Okay.
They're kind of between Ashland and Mansfield, about directly west of Ashland. Is that Shelby area over? Am I thinking right? I don't know. Somewhere over that way. Stoll is out of Sciow in Tus County. And then, I think that's still Tus County. Is it Harrison County? Okay. And then Eclipse is out of Cuyahoga Falls.
Okay.
Fairly local. The Schaefer Johnson Lichtenwalders engineer on this project, they they have a Mansfield office. They talked to one of the engineers over out of that office about that they weren't familiar with Rising Sun. The guys from Worcester. They talked to Keith, Gary, out of Mansfield, and he's worked with them on several projects and had no problems with them. He said they did a good job. So what I'd like to propose is that you if if you're comfortable awarding that contract contingent on Bob reviewing all the documents, as well as the county needs to review them since there's CDBG money involved, the prosecutor has to sign it, and then also, I believe, one of the commissioners will have to sign since there's some county money involved. But if you're comfortable, or if that's okay, I guess, prelimi- or not preliminary, but contingently awarding the contract pending everybody's reviews so we can get things rolling, get the pre-construction meeting scheduled, and hopefully break ground soon.
I'll make a motion to approve contingent on Bob Hyde's review of the contract.
I'll second that.
Khan?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
And Hafi.
Aye.
The two forty-one properties that we have for demolition, both of them had asbestos, but it was a pretty small amount in both. Some duct wrap, duct insulation in the one property, and then some window glazing in the other property. It was a small enough amount that the funding source has agreed to include that as part of the contract for demolition, so it's not separate. So it'll be up to the demolition contractors whether they're certified to do that, or they have to sub it out, which is good news for us. It doesn't hold anything up any longer. The specs for the demolitions have been finalized. We're first up, is what I'm being told. Our two, well, there's three properties here in town are on the first round. So they should get those out. They have pre-selected contractors and get their bids from them and get it rolling.
Out of curiosity, where is the third property?
North Matty. Matt Anthony, yes. Don't know the house number off the top of my head.
I mean, is that the one that's just north of Clinton there?
Yes, two, two houses north of Clinton on the west side. We, the Appalachian Community Grant, that's the big, big one. OHM was selected by the group for, to be the consultant. They're one of the pre, pre-approved state, state-procured consultants. They were selected to be our rep for these projects. We met with them this afternoon, found out some, seems like the details are ever-changing. What's coming out of Columbus isn't what we've been understanding all along. Doesn't change the projects any, but it might change who we're partnered with. There, I guess, originally, everybody thought that the state was going to award multiple contracts, or multiple projects, I should say, throughout the region, the Appalachian region. What we're hearing now is they're wanting to partner up four-plus counties to be one project. And there's a lot of questions on how that's going to work. How, you know, we could be most likely, we'll be paired up with like Tus, Muskingham, Knox, Koshokton, and that'll be one project with various facets to it. It's a little, I don't know, a little confusing as to why they're wanting to do that, but, so the gist of it is they're wanting to award maybe three or four projects versus thirty, or forty, whatever the number may have been. Not sure how that's going to work. Not sure how the administration of those dollars is going to work, whether that's going to be through like an omega-type organization, who as I already said, they don't have the manpower to do it, or if it'll go through a state agency, it'll be trickled to the county. I don't know. There's a lot of questions. And that just came out today. We're I'm not discouraged, but I'm just kind of waiting to see what the next twist is. We'll see what happens. Nothing on our resurfacing. They're working on the design and documents on that. Wanted to let you know I met Karen Goddard last week from Home Soil and Water. She had applied for some EPA, I believe it's EPA money, and was awarded, so she was able to buy some trees for the areas down at Deer Run Park by the amphitheater. On the back, behind the amphitheater, there's an existing tree line there on the bank, and there's a gap between the tall trees and the ground level. So these would be like the mid-level trees and shrubs to try to block, provide some screening between the dog park, skate park area, and the amphitheater, and I gave her permission to go ahead and proceed. Twenty-three plantings, seedlings, very minimal impact. And then also, she got some what are they, what did she call them? They're wet-friendly species for down at the Pollinator Garden, down at Airport Park, continue to develop that area, which she said has really taken off in the last year. It's really becoming established. She did mention she walked the disc golf course, and there's the few areas in those streams that would benefit from some stabilization plantings. I told her, feel free to proceed with trying to get funding for it. I think that'd be great to help the erosion. I'm aware of a couple of the areas she's talking of, and they're, they're definitely washing, so anything we can do to prevent that would be good. Mosquito spraying started up. Doing every week unless something drastic changes with the weather. We are, as of last Monday, we're now at full staff in the utility and street department. Everything's going well with the new guys so far. The last thing I have for you, something to think about, Kimball, our, our current extension will expire June thirty? I think it goes through, through June. They have offered to provide five more one-year extensions if that's something we're interested in, so the option would be to continue the one-year extensions, rebid, or just not have a contract. I don't know if you have thoughts on that, or if you want to think about it?
Were the, were the existing extensions going up a certain percentage each year?
Yeah, there's.
Is that how the steps work?
Yeah, there was a, it was tied to inflation or Consumer Price Index. There's a certain percentage they, they can increase every year.
And presumably, the extension, the new extensions would follow that same?
I would assume so, you know, especially considering inflation recently.
I think we really should go out and get bids just to show the community that we're looking around.
Okay.
Is, if we take bids, would that eliminate the option of using those extensions, or can we do both? I, I mean, kind of hold on to those as, as a backup to the, the bid process if we decide to put out for bids?
I don't know that they, that we could force them to continue the extensions because these are not under the contract. Contracts expired. They're just, they've offered to extend five more. I don't think we could hold them to.
No. I, well, I'd have to reread the contract, but that would be very unusual.
Right.
That you could do both.
Previously, when, when we rebid this, we had that luxury of being under contract. We were just getting a feel for where the market was, and if you remember, I don't know how many years ago that was, but
A lot of years ago.
Pricing came back really high, so we rejected all bids and just stayed with the Kimball contract.
It wasn't really even that close when we went out.
Right. So what are the rest of you think about? Do you want to see rebid to see what pricing is?
I'm a little skeptical of rebidding if we're going to get hosed in pricing because I feel like Kimball's giving us an olive branch, and the way prices are with everything else, I don't see anyone else coming in at a reasonable price, but that's just me.
So you're saying if, if, if we get bids, then that nullifies the offer? You think it nullifies the offer from Kimball?
Could.
I think if I, I think it would, because Kimball's going to say, okay, you want to bid, here's our bid.
Well, and here's a new contract with new pricing.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I, I, I can just say that Kimball is they, they're getting all the bids of a lot of towns around here, and there must be a reason for that, that they're bidding. I, I before you make a decision not to accept the extension, I would want to look at that contract again to make sure that it would violate that contract, and if it does, if they're going to rebid, you better really think long-term about doing that.
I'll see if I can get some kind of an idea from them as well on what the extensions would look like percentage-wise for an increase by the next meeting, if that's fair. We have a little bit of time, but if we're going to rebid, it's going to be fairly quick to. I believe that's all ahead.
One thing I want to ask, going back to the disc park. I've already been told that disc people are not going to mow, and they want to make sure we do.
They want to make sure, or you want to make sure?
No, they want to make sure through me.
Okay. Well, my answer's going to be the same as when they came in. We mow it when we're available, when we're able to. From day one, we never promised them we'd mow it every week. It's, we'll mow it when we can, but it's not going to be like manicured greens or anything. I promise you that.
I don't think they're expecting that, but.
Well, their expectations changed from day one until they came in that last time.
Don't wait?
I believe so.
Bob? Excuse me. Bobby?
If we have anything.
It turns out, Bob.
Okay. This is about the Trex application. We've done several of these, just to review briefly. If, if we have met our quota, we being the town of Millersburg, as far as liquor licenses are concerned, then the, the state can't issue anymore, but they can Trex in a license from someplace else, and that's what this is. But the prerequisite to that is that it has to be an economic development project, and so this application is, I guess, laying out their case that it's going to, it is going to, you know, be economically a boon to Millersburg to allow this Trex to come in. I think you all know it's the, the old Burger King property, which is now going to be called the Daybreak Bistro. And from my knowledge, it's a breakfast place, which doesn't seem like that would sell a lot of liquor, but oh, well, I'm not, I'm not the person doing it, but the, on the second page of the application, it talks about the things that we would be interested in, and that is, you know, the amount of the project they're investing is a hundred and fifty thousand. They're going to employ eight to ten people. Ohio unemployment tax, it's X number of dollars, property tax, it's all there in the application, sales tax, state withholding. The one tax they did not project was Millersburg income tax, and if, if their payroll figures are right, which is not in here, but it was in the, the cover letter that came with this, the attorney says that they're going to have approximately three hundred thousand dollars in payroll, and you know, that works out to be, be about forty-five hundred dollars in Millersburg income tax. So that's the application. It's up to you. The only decision you have today is whether or not you believe that this would be economically beneficial to Millersburg. Then, if you want to object to the, the license coming in, that's a separate hearing that we can request a hearing on that issue. So this is only on the issue of whether or not you think it would be an economic benefit to, to Millersburg.
I think a thriving business of any kind beats an empty dead building as far as economic development.
What, what I'd like to get is a vote from all of you, and then that, and that Jeff can sign if you do agree that, you know, it's an economic benefit, that, then he's able to sign off on this application, and then it'll be sent into the state.
Does it need to be a motion, Bob?
I would say yes.
Is this a yes or no on Trexing the permit in, or?
This is separate. This is only on the issue of whether it would be an economic benefit to Millersburg, whether the project as they propose it here would be an economic benefit to Millersburg.
So do they propose it with and without the permit?
No, that, what would happen next, if you say yes, it would be an economic benefit, then it goes back to the state. The state has to make a decision then whether or not the Trex should occur at that hearing. If we say we object to the license coming in, then that would be a, that separate hearing. Does that answer your question?
So there will be two separate, this will come in front of the council again if they are?
Only, the, the only issue then is, do you want to be part of the hearing at the state level to object to the license coming in? And it's, it wouldn't be, that, then it's totally in the hands of the state. It's not our decision anymore. So, you know, if you wanted to go to Columbus, to, to the actual license being brought into Millersburg, then that would be the time for that.
So why don't they do it either way? What they feel like their permit will gain them and what it doesn't gain them?
They obviously think that selling alcohol there will increase their business. And so, you know, that's why they're, they're asking, that's why they're saying that it would be an economic benefit for them to be able to bring the license in.
But Bob, they can't, they can't proceed unless they approach the municipality, which is us, for the approval. So this is the first step.
It's correct.
So how, how can you not determine that it's a benefit, or as far as the economic development project?
I mean, you know, they, they have represented these numbers. If you call them and say, hey, we don't, we don't, we don't agree with your numbers.
Okay.
You know, that sort of thing. Or they could provide more information, you know, for instance, a projected balance sheet for the business, you know, that sort of thing. You know, if you just wanted more information before you made the decision, you could require them to do that.
The, the one, maybe this, well, it says right here on the application. The city, village, township, despite approving the Trex transfer, can still object to the issuance of your permit at the applied for location. So, did that answer it a little bit better?
Well, this is the paper that sometimes I ask you guys, because I must be hearing separate from this.
Okay.
We will get a notice from winter control.
Which we all know that
That if you write to object to it and request it, that will come later.
I agree with what Brad had made a comment on earlier. It's certainly better than a vacant building and
And certainly better than a fly-by-night car dealership, too.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Khan?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Poland? And Hofstadter?
Aye.
And Hafi.
Aye.
Anything else, Bob?
That's it. What? I mentioned this, that it was a part of the motion, that Jeff would be the one that signed off on it. I assume that that was, you know, what you meant by making the motion.
See, I did make a real clear motion, did I? Do I need to clarify that?
It probably wouldn't be a bad idea because he's going to be the one signing the, the application.
So to be really specific, I, I made a motion to approve of the Economic Development Transfer Form, also known as Trex. Is that sufficient?
I don't think we need to do another roll call vote, but if anybody changes their vote because of that, you should say so now.
Thank you. Certificate of Estuary of Property Tax Renewal for levy renewal. I would give out a certificate, and they're estimating the tax renewal at a hundred and thirty thousand and sixty-one dollars. Okay, we don't need to do anything else with this, correct?
We need to accept that.
Accept that? Okay.
Can you motion accept it? I'll make a motion to accept that.
Hafi?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
And Khan?
Aye.
Thank you. Got a proclamation I'd like to read next. As a symbol honoring deceased men and women in our armed forces and to assist in the rehabilitation of our living victims of war, the American Legion Auxiliary Unit one ninety-two, Millersburg, Ohio, and Rim Rock Riders Four-H Club will be distributing poppies as part of the Auxiliary Annual Poppy Day Program. I urge all citizens of Millersburg to support this worthwhile program as I, Jeff Hubner, Mayor of Village Millsburg, do hereby proclaim that Saturday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, be designated as Poppy Day in the Village Millsburg, Holmes County, Ohio. Second reading of resolution two thousand twenty-three dash twelve by title only. A resolution authorizing participation in ODOT road salt contracts awarded in two thousand twenty-three. Are there any questions? May we have motion to suspend the third reading?
I so move. Shoemaker?
Second.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
And Hafi.
Aye.
Do you have motion to pass?
So moved.
I'll second.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Hafi?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
And Khan?
Aye.
Thank you. First reading of resolution two thousand twenty-three dash fourteen by title only. A resolution determining proceed with the submission to the electors of, of the question of levying tax the excess of ten mil limitation. Are there any questions? Any committee reports?
This past week, the Tree City Group met, wrapped up the plans for the Arbor Day celebration of the first grade students, which will be happening this Friday.
Thank you. Any old business? New business?
I would like to discuss our summer meeting schedule.
Okay.
Last, last summer, we did three months, correct, or two months?
No, I think it was what?
Four.
Four?
No.
No, I thought it was three.
It was six.
It was six! Anybody else have a number? We got another number.
I think it was three.
I believe it was July, August, and September.
Right, right.
Three.
So you want to leave it there? You want to go June, July, August?
May, June, July, August. Well, you said six?
I'm just trying to spread it out. For the, I mean, for the people that have summer activities, which would be most beneficial, June, July, August, or July, August, September?
I, personally, I would say probably June, July, and August. School starts then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
September.
Okay.
But I do want to caution you, having a budget, it's going to have to be passed by July fifteenth. So whichever night you decide to have a meeting.
That's when we're going to have, that's when we're going to have to pass it.
Yeah, so maybe the first meeting, that should be the second Monday of every month. They're going to meet once a month.
That'd be July tenth. If we stick with the second Monday.
The first first meeting in a month, which would be the second Monday.
Right, yeah.
So that we have time to get that budget passed.
So you, you want to just stay with the second Monday in June, July, and August then?
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to change the meetings to change the meetings to just once a month, starting in June, ending in August. So it'd be the second Monday of each month. If that makes sense.
I'll second that.
Khan?
Aye.
Hafi?
Aye.
Holan?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Thank you. Any other new business? Is that the session? Any other issues before council?
One, sorry, totally slipped my mind.
Coming in at the end, you slid it right in there.
I didn't, I guess I didn't mention cleanup day last Saturday went very, very well. It was very, very busy. Just, obviously, that's a service you guys provide through the contract we have with Kimball. Very well utilized this year, put it that way.
And thanks for all the street workers that came out and helped, and Mr. Hofstadter, and of course, Nate. Anything else?
Sorry about that.
Maybe have a motion for German?
Second.
Holan?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
And Hafi?
Aye.
I want four of you, thanks.